I will call the Sunset Empire Transportation District Board of Commissioners meeting to order for July 28, 2022. And we will start off by doing pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mary, would you mind taking roll call, please? Commissioner Booth Smith?
Here.
Commissioner McDonald?
Here.
Commissioner Nino?
Here.
Commissioner Allegria?
Here.
Commissioner Withers?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner.
Here.
Good morning, thank you. All right, thank you, Mary. And it looks like it is time of year to reelect officers or the election of officers. And I will turn it over to our vice chair so we get through the chairperson.
And so I would like to encourage and invite applicants and nominations for the position of board chair.
Is the floor open, Tracy, or is there some other procedural thing?
Are we do, no. If you have, do you have a nomination, Charles?
I'd like to nominate Debbie Booth Smith as our chair.
Okay, Debbie, this may not make.
I second the motion.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing done, we close nominations. We, shall we stand by recognition of unanimous vote for Debbie Booth Smith?
Yes.
That was really worked fast there. All right.
All right, since the chairperson has been elected, we will move on to vice chair. I would accept nominations for vice chair for the next year.
I move to nominate Tracy as vice chair. All right, may Commissioner Tracy.
I'll second that. And Tracy?
I'm sorry.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Okay, there's no other nominations, we'll close for vice chair. And is there any objections? We're just gonna make this faster. Is there any objections to Tracy? All right, Tracy, congratulations.
Thank you.
Have a good year.
I promise to keep the pharmacy filled and.
And don't raise taxes, right?
Don't raise taxes, okay, all right.
And we will move on to Secretary Treasurer. We'll open up nominations for Secretary Treasurer.
And I would really encourage like to nominate Diane. Really, you've done a fabulous job and really.
Thank you. It's hard for me to come all the way here sometimes.
I know, I know.
Which is why I would like to nominate Pamela Alenia in case there's multiple people. I don't know how it works. But thank you, Tracy.
All right, so it looks like we have two. First, would you accept the position, Pamela, if you are elected?
Yes.
All right, so we have two, and we do start with Diana. So we will take a roll call vote for Diana being the Secretary Treasurer for the next year. Mary, please. Okay, Commissioner Booth Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
It's a hard choice. Diane, yeah, I'll speak.
Commissioner Nino?
How does that work? Please help me out. So if I nominated someone else, I can say nay to this. So I'll say nay.
Commissioner Allegria?
I guess I have to say aye.
She said what?
She says aye.
She said aye, all righty. Commissioner Withers?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Verell?
Aye.
Okay, well, it looks like Diana got enough votes.
Thank you.
And I'm all in your backup, so you don't have to worry about it.
Thank you so much. I appreciate, I appreciate being able to.
All right.
I understand because I've been in a position where we're in the South County and sometimes you just, your day is, and your obligations are also with your family and with other things, so.
I heard a lot, though, between, seeing how police gangs.
Yeah. So if the three of you have to immediately go over the bank and sign a bankruptcy, that would be great.
Yes, that would be amazing.
I signed yesterday, but I'll have to re-sign again. All right.
Joe was trying to over.
I was just saying, get it done.
So do we have to do committees also, or is that?
There'll be an agenda.
Down there a little bit, okay. Let's go to changes of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes for the agenda this morning?
I'm here.
Yes.
I had a question about the timing of this meeting when it transitions to the, the next meeting. Would there be a break and a change, or we go straight to that, the, the work session?
It's, that meeting will start at 11:30. So it depends on how long this meeting lasts. There may be a break. There probably will be a break.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
And how long will our 11:30 meeting be?
30. 30.
7:30.
Don't know how long it will be. Hour, hour and a half?
Go down to a half.
About an hour.
Yeah. About 1 o'clock is what the estimate is. All right. Public comment, do we have any public comments today?
So, just a minute here. I do see, well, we have two, somebody out. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the board? You can unmute yourself and turn the camera on if you have one.
Okay. All right. Approval of board minutes from last month.
I would move that we adopt the approval of the board minutes. All second then.
Okay, thank you. And is there any discussion?
Okay, there is a spelling error.
I spelled check.
Okay, under number seven, reports from chair, it's writing with one D.
Which?
It's written instead of reading.
Reports. First sentence under reports, so it's that Commissioner McDonald.
Oh.
I see that.
All right. Pam stays up all night looking for something.
It just goes.
I just look at it.
It just goes, I can't help it.
Any, any other corrections? All right, Mary, would you take a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Booth Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Nino?
Yes.
Commissioner Allegria?
Yes.
Commissioner Withers?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Verell?
Yes.
All right, and on to reports from the chair commissioners. And I think we'll start with Diana since she was the last one in today.
Yes. Good morning, I apologize for being late. My only report was that I was very pleased to participate in the rural transit day, the pledge that we all took and making it visual for all the people that we serve by signing it, printing it. They, that was a very beautiful initiative, so I'm glad to have participated in that.
Okay. Charles, would you like to go next?
Yes, I want to also comment on the rural transit day. I had the experience, I was driving on real, in a real Highway 78 out in eastern part of the state. I mean, it really was rural and nothing. But weird enough, I pulled off at a gas station and right in front of it was a, was a transit district shelter for people riding the bus. And that sort of, that kind of highlights what the rural transit district does. And I was very, I was touched by seeing that because, I mean, in the middle of nowhere, there's this one little bus stop, and I'm guessing there's people who depend on that bus. And so it sort of brings home what we do here and the sort of our mission and, and what rural transit districts do. And I was proud of their commissioner. Every day I'm proud, but I was really proud that day.
Thank you, Charles. And Rebecca?
The one item is I'd like to save it for Kathy Klezick's report. I just had an idea, not so much a report, but maybe an idea that would fold into her comments about her reporting on the safe routes to schools. So I'll save that for later, thank you.
Thank you. Pamela?
Yes.
Guillermo?
Yeah, I'd like to, I live in Moreington, I do a block, and I stopped at that little bus stop just to check it out. And I was pleased to see that there was a notice there, both in English and in Spanish. And the Spanish was correct. But then I, then the other sign was the schedule, which is in English. There was no one, no schedule in Spanish. I don't, which could be an issue or not.
Mary, have we ever done the schedule in Spanish?
No, they're not on our web in Spanish, they're not, no. Street signs are that we use, you know, routes are in English. I don't know if that would confuse or, I don't know.
Well, and you know what? And I thought the same thing. I, because a schedule is a schedule, you know what I'm saying? But in terms of a person who is truly monolingual, I, I don't know, but.
Right, I can try it and see if it.
Yes, what way around would it?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, certainly thought about it. But again, my thoughts were that the street signs are not going to be in Spanish. Where they're going, looking up at the sign. Do you see what I'm saying?
It's like a market, then, yeah, it says market instead of la calle or tienda.
Right, so if you need to go, you know, down Exchange and you need to go on Marine Drive, it's, they're gonna be have to look for that sign. But, so I don't know.
Take a look at it.
Yeah, we'll think about it.
I think we've never had a request for it either, you know, for that. But I think we've done really good getting as much in Spanish as we have. But always improvements.
You've done a lot better than my agency. You've done a lot better than Fred Meyer.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I've been arguing, there's a manager named Mr. Garcia, and the first time the pandemic hit, I said, and I, I said, I am, you know, I introduced myself, I told him who I was, and I said, "There's no sign out there that is in Spanish for our monolingual customers." "Oh, yeah, I know." Anyway, he apologized, and then they put up a sign, and then they took it down.
Oh, wow. That's true. Okay.
But no, you're right, I applaud you. You're doing a good job of that.
Really improved since I've been on the board.
Yes, very.
Tracy?
And, and I would like to comment as a, as a frequent flyer on the 101 route now. If, that's my go-to-work situation and, and I, I changed my, I did the mistake of changing my hours before I actually read the schedule in English or Spanish. And then I said, "Well, wait a minute, the original route would have certainly done, gotten me to work on time, so now I have to change my work schedule back to the bus schedule."
Oh, for the summer.
And I appreciate it. And, and I had several, I've had some conversations with the people that are riding the bus, and everybody seems to be pretty happy with the app. The fact that the one lady with her daughter missed the bus because of some other thing not, including not the schedule. So she called the number and they sent somebody back with another rig to bring them up to the route speed again. That's a compliment to our system, so that's all I have to report.
Thanks to hear. Nice to hear. I also attended the appreciation day. I must have went in the morning, you went in the afternoon, maybe?
I didn't go, but I was excited.
Oh, you did, oh. So it was always a nice presentation, Jennifer did a great job, pizza's always good. And I had a nice time there, even though we had to have our pictures taken. And that's, that's all I have to report for this month. Yeah? Oh, did you, but you reported, didn't you?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's all. Make sure I didn't miss somebody. We'll move on to financial reports. I would entertain a motion to approve the financials.
What would you approve the financial report?
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the financials in the second. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Spelling correction on the first page, page nine of our packets. It should say June Financial Exceptions. It's just J U N at the moment.
I'll toss through the first three letters of the month.
Ah, okay. There you go, so that makes.
I can change that, though, I'm happy to spell out the entire month. Some ones are really long, right?
Everyone's showing up was like, oh, that's a problem. And then on the next page, page 10, I just had a question on IM4425, our charging station. I don't think I've ever learned how it works. Do we own the charging stations? Do we buy them, or do we, like, how does that work in revenue?
So the charging station is a program that ODOT put into place that we're in Electric Highway. They picked a contractor to run those chargers. We just provide a space. We have no involvement outside of, we get a little bit of revenue. And you can see that alls we got this year was $48.64.
And that revenue comes from ODOT?
No, it comes from the company that owns the car chargers, the charging station.
So is it like a percentage?
It's a very tiny, very.
It's a very tiny percentage.
Yes.
Okay, so we just provide like the area, the space for them to.
Correct, they pay for all the electric costs and stuff, it's on a separate meter.
It's not us?
Yep.
Ah, all right, thank you. And that's it for you.
And so that $48.64 was for the whole year.
Yes.
Twenty.
Yes.
Twenty, okay.
I, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a figure. Pamela?
On page 11, AD31, should notice, what does online subscription mean?
Subscriptions and IT services.
I think you brought it up.
Subscriptions and IT services, online subscriptions.
Like we have software packages that we subscribe to.
Okay, so it's all computer, though, the subscriptions are all computer?
Yes.
And then? And then, um. Okay, looked at the money market on page 10, 12, I mean, page 12. Is, is there another financial, 1050? Is there another financial mechanism that could earn more than $3.46? Has that ever been investigated, or is it too small an amount?
That money market account goes back to when the district was having financial difficulties and one of the loans that the district got was from the bank at that time. They did require us to have a setup, put in some money to a money market account. I want to say it was 60-some thousand dollars. That loan was paid off, we've kind of just left that money sitting in there. And I think we put bus sales income in that, is that correct? No, okay, it's just been sitting there.
No, it just sits, no activity, just a little bit of interest that it earned something.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And our, the only other interest-bearing accounts we have is LGIP, or the, help me out, LGIP.
1030. I can't even.
The government, local government investment pool, where everybody pulls everybody together and then the state manages that. That interest rate recently has rapidly declined. And with the interest rate, we got an increase yesterday, it'll keep going up. So we may at some point just move it over.
So is there?
It won't get much more than $3, it's not.
So is there a possibility then to move it over to the LGIP?
We, we could, yeah, it's, it's, it's not gonna make that big of a difference.
Well, no, money is money. And then, let's see, that didn't go over well. Let me find it right here.
Hold on, on that same subject, so then, how much money is on that money market, LCN? $60,000 are still sitting there?
No, it's just $5,672.27.
Just that, fine, thank you. Please continue.
I can make up Christmas.
Okay, I might have asked this before. This is starting, you know, we talked about starting the list of financial terms.
Yes.
Okay, and one of them, I think, you may know, the accrued labor system. Does that mean all the wages? Is that just a fancy thing? Okay.
Yeah, that's our, our, all of our wage and taxes and everything that had to be paid for the last pay period.
Okay. And then on page 13, there's no number on it. It's the, our county receivable aging. What is 6214 to County Transportation District Medical Bill, billing? Is that what that means?
Yes.
And why is that?
Medicaid building.
Medicaid.
Medicaid. We provide non-emergent medical transportation through the Medicaid program.
Okay, and that, okay, okay. You'll be relieved to know that's it.
Thank you, Pamela. Anything else? Mary, would you take roll call? Commissioner Booth Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Nino?
Aye.
Commissioner Allegria?
Aye.
Commissioner Withers?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Verell?
Aye.
Motion pending. Thank you. Continued business, if we have any. So we'll move on to new business, committee assignments. So we have Transportation Advisory Committee.
That was certainly helped by Deanna.
Okay. Deanna, would you like to continue with that?
Yes.
Any objections from anybody?
I was going to, this is Rebecca, I'm, I'm interested in that, too. So if it comes, there is an opportunity for me to participate, I would like to do that.
All right, so can we leave Diana, Deanna on there? And then if for some reason you couldn't attend, could Rebecca attend in her place?
Yeah.
Is that all right?
And can Rebecca be a part of the committee, or like, not? Only one, one member of the board can be there. I'm happy to talk with you about it and let you know what it is, if you're interested.
And this, this is, you know, just a reminder, this isn't something the board decides. This is the chairperson's decision, or it gets placed on the committees.
Okay, all I wanted to say was that I am interested in it, and if it comes time that there's, there's a place to fill, I'd be happy to be a nominee.
All right, thank you, Rebecca. Okay, we're gonna leave Diana on it for this, for the time period and continue there. All right. The Executive Directory Evaluation and Compensation Committee. I think I'm on that now. Tracy?
No, Charles.
Charles and Pamela?
Pamela, Charles and Pamela.
Okay. And I am going to stay on that, I think the chairman should be on that.
Chairwoman.
Chairwoman, chairperson.
Chairperson.
Um. Rebecca, would you like to be on that, since you're interested in being on a committee?
I was writing notes to myself, which one are you speaking about?
The evaluation of the director.
That would be fine.
Let's put you on that one, and I think.
Ma'am chair, you can take me off if I want to speak.
I would like to keep Pamela on, and we'll find you another job to do somewhere.
I have lots of them, so I, you know, I, if I'm not this one, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
You did a very good job, and I'd like to mix it up a little bit and give opportunities also.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's the Executive Directory Evaluation and Compensation, Compensation Committee. And then the Northwest Area Commission on Transportation.
And Tracy currently. And I, I appreciate being on there, but it's, it is an eye-opening experience to talk with other departments and if other, if other persons were interested, you know.
Well, I know Charles is busy. And I know Guillermo, you've been kind of overwhelmed as far as your work shortage there. So I would really, at this point, like to just keep Tracy on there, if you're with that.
How do you guys, is that, is anybody else? I mean, I don't want.
I mean, I like to mix things up, but I also understand when people have other, other things.
No, definitely.
Okay, so I think we'll keep Tracy on that. Does that fulfill all of our committees?
Yep.
All right, thank you, everybody. And we will move on to the memorandum of understanding ODOT.
Okay, this item, I've mentioned it before. This is, ODOT is doing a pilot program, pilot project called the Net Zero Pilot Project. And this is, they're anxiously awaiting, by the way, the, the signed, the signed document. I got an email a few minutes ago about it. But they're gonna provide consultation services free of charge to a small group of transit providers, and we're gonna be included in that, to help us learn how we can reduce greenhouse gases, gas emissions from our transit operations. The consultant may also provide agencies with technical assistance to procure, put into service low-emission vehicles and/or create guidance documents, white papers, or tools for broader distribution and use. So this really kind of falls in line with what we've been looking at over the last several, several years of, of looking at alternative fuel buses. So this will give us another tool in our tool chest to keep exploring that and have some professional guidance on it. So what the pilot will provide is an inventory of the emissions resulting from a provider's entire transit operational profile. And that not only includes the fleet, but also building energy use, employee travel, and other factors. And a greenhouse gas emissions reduction plan or proposal, so some steps of how we can get to where we want to be. That'll be developed in collaboration with us. It outlines the best ways for us to look at how we are gonna reduce emissions. They'll assist us to develop and apply standards for tracking emissions reductions. If applicable, applicable, they'll advise and support providers to develop feasible emissions reductions targets, possibly including goal dates for completion. possibly including goal dates for completion. What it will not require of the participating providers will not be required to make a commitment to emissions reductions going forward. Providers will not be required to meet their identified emissions reduction targets if established. Providers will not be required to complete tasks identified in the planned document once it's completed. And then, as I said earlier, there is no cost to this program for us, but I see it as a great opportunity because we don't have the in-depth knowledge that these consultants will, will have on how we can pave a road to alternative fuels in the future. This is gonna be just for small and rural providers, so that's why I jumped on it and wanted to be a part of it. So, staff is recommending that most should be made to approve the memorandum of understanding with ODOT and authorize the board chair to sign it.
Do we have any idea approximately how much staff time there would be?
Yeah, approximately forty-five hours.
A year.
For the whole, for the whole project.
Chairman, I would move that we approve the memorandum of understanding with ODOT and authorize yourself to sign.
Second?
Madam Chair, I think we had discussion.
We've got a second, so now we can discuss it.
Oh, those are back.
Okay, who's second, Pamela did, okay, Charles?
Rebecca had her hand up, I didn't know.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, some of the pitfalls of Zoom, huh? All, I was just raising my hand to make a motion to approve, but I did want to make a comment that I would be very interested in seeing what the recommendations are for cutting emissions. So, this is really a good timing and I look forward to hearing what the report provides, thank you.
Guillermo?
How long's a tenure of the program, is it a year program or?
I don't recall, it's one year, they anticipate the project to take one year to develop the plan.
Pamela?
I'd like to recommend that the second part, that's not a requirement, should be included in the next strategic plan. All this work, if not, also like to just say.
Good suggestion.
I'd like to make, as the board, to make a commitment to mission reductions, now I don't know if this means there are items that would reduce the missions or whether we, it's just a commitment to mission reduction. I personally, I mean, as a commissioner, like to say, I am approving of missions reductions as part of Sunset.
Okay, and I think we can work that into our strategic planning, I have a really hard time with that word, so excuse me. Okay, so I, I like that idea a lot, Pamela.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, anybody else, any other discussion? Mary, you want to take a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Lu Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Nino?
Aye.
Commissioner Legria?
I just wanted to mention that there, you can continue to work on this, if they didn't complete it on page twenty-five. Extend it.
Commissioner Withers? Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Romero?
Aye.
Thank you, move on to ODOT Agreement three, five, three, four, zero approval.
So, this agreement is the result of a successful section fifty-three thirty-nine competitive grant for two manufactured Gilligan buses, those are the larger buses that we run on Route one oh one. They look beautiful, a lot of positive comments from riders and the drivers. And so, we're recommending that most should be made to approve ODOT Agreement three, five, three, four, zero and authorize the board chair to sign it.
I'd like to move to approve ODOT Agreement number three, five, three, four, zero and authorize our board chair to sign it.
In a second?
I'll second.
We'll let Rebecca say that one, okay, thank you, is there any discussion? I'm assuming that our attorneys, this is a normal, everyday.
This is a standard.
Okay.
Just one comment that then the estimated order date would be, like, we, we haven't done it yet, even though it said July first?
No, we haven't, we haven't.
Because we haven't approved it, and then the estimated delivery date, it said June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Does that mean that we have until twenty twenty-five to procure it, but we can do it before?
That's, that's correct, ODOT has extended out agreements, the timeline, just because of the severe supply change shortages that we have. So, that's why, that way we don't have to go back and do an amendment, you know, it's saving them time.
So, we'll try to get them soon, but we have until twenty-five, awesome, thank you.
And does that?
Pamela?
And does that say that somewhere, because I thought, well, haven't I read this before, of that, it's an extension?
No, this is not an extension, this is the original agreement, but what they did is they, they made those timelines, rather than it being a two-year agreement, they extended it all the way up to twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so there's no paperwork that has been signed.
Correct, that's what you're, that's the action that you're gonna take today to authorize the board chair to sign it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, Mary, would you like to do a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Lu Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Nino?
Aye.
Mr. Legria?
Aye.
Commissioner Withers?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Romero?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the disposal of vehicles.
All right, so we're gonna be asking the board to, okay, for us to dispose of some vehicles that are old, outdated, they've reached their life expect, expectancies. I do want to just kind of go through that and show you what life expectancies on buses are. It depends on the size of the bus, so that first one, bus number seventy-seven, the life expectancy on that bus is twelve years or five hundred thousand miles. As you can see, that was a bus that we purchased in two thousand and three, so we are way beyond the years. And that's a testament to our maintenance staff of keeping the buses on the road much longer than their expected life. And then, as, as you go down, you'll see the next bus, number ninety, a Chevrolet, that's a class C bus, if I remember correctly. Life expectancy on that bus is only ten years or three hundred and fifty thousand miles, and you can see that we ran that for twelve years. And then the next two, or next three actually, or two, yeah, are Fords that are eight years old, but their mileage is, is much higher. And the life expectancy doesn't have to be years and miles, it's either years or miles. And so, each of these buses has exceeded their, their lifespan, whether it's years or miles. There is one correction to be made and that is.
Yeah, so it's not bus ninety-eight, shops decided to do bus ninety-nine, they're very similar, and it has a million miles on it.
Yeah, so the last one should be ninety-nine?
Yes.
Just for history's sake, we bought two Gilligans, this being one of them, several years ago, I picked both of these up for, it was less than twenty-five thousand dollars total for two buses, for Northwest Bus Sales up in Federal Way. We bought them because it was such a great deal and we needed capacity for when the cruise ships came in, they serviced very well, so. But this one, this one's old and tired and as with the other buses around this list, maintenance has stripped all the usable parts that we could use. And so now it's time just to make them go away so we can make room in our lot for new buses that are coming.
Okay, I would entertain a motion, Pamela?
Oh, special comments after the motion.
Motion first. Do you want to make a motion?
Oh, yes, I moved to approve this.
In a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and Pamela, you had comments?
Can these be recycled at this place that's on only, I think it's only?
We have a scrapper that we deal with.
That should get money for.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just want to comment that we, I, I'm, I'm affected by the Bluebird, so I'd like to propose that we put it on the turnaround in a little rotating sign. No.
Oh dear.
I, I just have some affection for that particular bus and so, and I, I'll miss it.
Pamela?
This is not apropos of anything except what Tracy had suggested about using the bus in the Christmas parade in Seaside, speaking of buses, so you have to kind of move on that now if you wanted to do it and.
There we go. We need, we need an entry in the Seaside Downtown Parade for Christmas. Yeah.
That's a great part of your marketing plan, darling.
We have a driver shortage and certain things that we will not be doing.
You could get kiddies rides, you have a Santa Claus, you like costumes, you could be Santa Claus, you could be elves.
I'll do Santa Claus, I even have a costume, I love you.
Pamela, I'll work on it.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, any, any other discussion on the disposal of these buses? All right, Mary, would you? Commissioner Lu Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Nino?
Aye.
Commissioner Legria?
Aye.
Commissioner Withers?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Romero?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Moving right along, any correspondence?
Yeah, I put one thing in the board packet, we received a very nice card from Margot Leilich, who was the Arum County Health Director, and this was in respect to the us providing rides at no cost for all the vaccination clinics or just to get people to their pharmacy or doctor's for their vaccination. And she wrote this beautiful handwritten note, but her writing is just spectacular. But I wanted to share that with the board that they're very appreciative, I was in a interviews for the New Warrens City Manager yesterday and Don, the county manager, was in and, and he reiterated the county's thanks for everything that we've done for vaccination, transportation, so.
Is there a new manager?
Director, they did hire somebody.
Yes, and I'll talk about that in my board, in my report.
Great, Margot filled a really important spot, well, she was here.
Yeah, she was absolutely the right person.
I have a question, did ask it before, how, how true, I mean, I, this is the first time I've heard that you, we did this, I think it's fantastic. How, how do you let the general public know that we've done this, you, you deserve user releases or?
We did a lot of outreach, a lot of work, you know, we did, we had, we had two programs, we had one when the county was doing vaccinations out at the fairgrounds and on, we ran a show from here.
Yeah.
And then for the people that couldn't take the regular bus or they went to their pharmacy, we used our ride assist department to get them to those.
And also, I think that on the County Public Health webpage where you would see upcoming if you kept scrolling, it said, if you need a ride, Sunset Empire Transportation District will, like, it had all the information on how to do it. So, any, every person that would check that webpage would see that we were providing that service.
We had a lot, a lot of information out there and the call center.
Yeah, I did volunteer work at the call center and anytime anybody called in looking for an appointment, we were always working about making sure they knew if they didn't have a way to get there, how to get it right out there too, so. So, there was a lot of information out there. But evidently not to your, which evidently not to where you were, because that would have been probably a really good idea, yeah.
But I think a lot of that information goes across the hall. And when I say across the hall, that's a two-step session.
Okay, all right, okay. Correspondents and how about Executive Directors' report?
Okay, I'll just go ahead and start off with your question about the Health Director, I'm really pleased to report that this past weekend I was over at Costco doing some shopping and ran into the Assistant County Manager and she let me know that a gentleman, and I, I can't remember his name off the top of my head, but he's from New York and he came out here and he rode our bus from Portland out to here and then he's been getting around, getting around on our system. And he's from upstate New York in a, in a rural area and he was very impressed with the services that we offered. I, I go, wow, even with our cutback, he was very impressed, much better than what they had in a community where he lived in upstate New York. So, that was nice to hear from an outside person that, you know, uses public transit and how much better it was than what they had in, in New York, so I was very proud of that. So, that was nice, other things in the board report, talked about ridership, you know, we ended up being down eight percent for the year, so not quite as bad as I thought it was gonna end up, so that was good. The, you know, the, the Lower Columbia Connector just keeps amazing me, you know, we had a forty-five percent increase last month in ridership on that and it just continues to go up, we get, every day we get the, we get who's gonna be riding that, who's bought the tickets through Amtrak and then they also have a six-day forecast, so it shows how many tickets have been sold for the next six days. During the summer months, that's gradually been increasing towards becoming, it, it's really viable. We're not to the point where the fares are paying for the service yet, but we're on a good trajectory that at some point fares are gonna cover a lot more of the expenses than that we have, you know.
That's great.
Yeah, so it's, it's doing very well.
Just wanted to make a comment about that, in terms of, if success is that there are a lot of times that it travels because with one, just one departure, you cut out a lot of things. And I think that's one of the big keys to success, there's a little problem with some of the roads they go on, but.
The, the, you know, keep in mind, we're gonna be talking about this, it's gonna be another topic for our, for our strategic planning session. And I originally thought, you know, that would be like in January, but we're actually, I'm gonna bump that up and I'll get with you as far as setting a date, but ideally, I'd like to probably have our planning session maybe as early as September, maybe October. And the reason I, I say that is we're coming up on a new biennium and with that new biennium, the Transportation Advisory Committee is going to be determining how we spend our STIF and STF dollars. And so, we need to have the board's strategic plan in place before we have that meeting so they can make decisions that are in line with the board's goals. And this route will be one of the things we'll be talking about, just kind of keep that in the back of your mind. It was mentioned before, the Rural Transit Day, which was a great day, it was, it was rather interesting sitting in there because the National Rural Technical Assistance Program, they had a Twitter chat. they had a Twitter chat. So, I'm, I'm sitting over there trying to eat pizza and listen to Jennifer talk and everything and, and twittering answers to, or tweeting answers to the questions that they were throwing out there. So, it was, it was a little challenge to juggle all that, but it, it was fun.
Multitasking.
Yes, very much so. Mentioned the tech meeting this fall. Several of us are going to be traveling down to Tillamook next Saturday or Friday to attend Doug Pylance Memorial. Doug was the general manager of Tillamook County Transportation District. And I'll be officiating that memorial. I'm going to try my hardest to keep myself together. It'll be very, it'll be a very tough time for everybody. And there's people coming from all across the state. So, excited that some of those kids are going to be there because they had no idea what their dad did. He, when they would ask him about his job, he'd turn the question around. He wanted to know what they were doing and how his grandchildren were doing. That was what he was focused on. So, he, they really don't know the impact that he had. They're going to learn that when people start talking next week, so.
And that's next Friday?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to come.
Okay, I'll send you the invite. You have to RSVP. And we're running a van down there, so we'll pick you up.
I'll look.
Okay. Uh, the Returning Citizen Program, I mentioned I was up in Iowa with Julia Castillo presenting at their public transportation con, conference. This was kind of a last minute invite. And just so you know, I did let Debbie know that Iowa Transit Association is paying my travel costs on that too, so. And that was good. And I put that really cool picture of the shampoo bottle. The, the brand name was In Transit, which I just thought was hilarious, being at a transit conference and they had that.
Crazy.
But, uh, Julia and I also did a Zoom presentation to the reentry council in Iowa the following, the week after that person, presentation, and that went well. And then, of course, I was down in Arkansas this week for the Southwest Transit Association's Summer University and got to speak about, about it down there too. It was like everywhere else, extremely well received. You know, it, it was titled in their program as the Returning Citizen Program without really any other description. So, most of the people or a lot of the people didn't know what it really was. And so, when it popped up, the first slide being, you know, the overarching goal is training people while they're incarcerated before they get released of how to become a transit driver and get their CDL. And you could hear the wows from across the audience. So, there's a ton of support from that. So, that was, that was a, a very good trip. There are going to be a couple more trips. The middle of August, I'm going to be going, Julie and I are going to be going to the SUN Conference up in New Hampshire. SUN Conference is the Small Urban Network. And that's the, uh, that's a subsection of Community, CTAA, the Community Transit Association of America. They invited us to come up and present there. And then we're doing another conference in October in Indiana. So, um, we're really, between her and I, we're doing a, we're doing a lot of, not just in person, but a lot of Zoom calls too, presentations, so. So, that's, that's good. Other than that, questions? Oh, wait.
Rebecca?
First of all, Jeff, thank you very much for all your hard work. And I'm, I'm getting a little feedback. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. You know, in regards to the Returning Citizen Program, you know, this is increasing the understanding. You know, you're, you're helping to spread the word and increase understanding about criminal justice reform objectives. So, I thank you for that. I, I really appreciate that. The one thing I have for the, you know, priorities under employee recruitment retention, substantial increases to, in wages for drivers. Can you give me a reminder or somebody give me a reminder about, you know, a, a little blurb about that? You know, like how, how are we doing with increasing those wages? Is this a new information just from this, within the past month?
No, this was, this was part of our collective bargaining agreement that we negotiated with the union.
Okay.
Where they had asked for a seven percent increase and my proposal was a much larger increase because we knew that we needed to, number one, attract people to apply here with a, a healthy increase in the starting wage, which it was fifteen percent increase. And then also increasing the topped out wage to help with our retention. And that one was also a fifteen percent increase. And then the steps in between that were either ten or, I think they're, I said, I think step two was a ten percent increase and then three, four, and five were a twelve percent increase. And then we also did, added a couple of extra longevity paid credits as well. So, that's what that was about.
Okay, thank you.
Anything related to effect last month?
It would affect May first.
Thank you.
Or workers anywhere. Any other questions for Jeff? Deanna?
Not a question, but this has been on the last few reports. So, if you go to page fifty-three, up top, the flag stop evaluation sign. It keeps saying the new signs are being designed and are being installed. See the sign at the bottom of this report.
Oh, I forgot to include that now, I'm sorry, thank you.
You included that and it hasn't been included.
Fusing. That's it.
Thank you.
I would just like to make a comment. I applaud you as an agency for doing that in terms of retention. Unfortunately, the leadership at my agency does not see it that way as I was sharing with you earlier. So, great job.
Thank you. Can I add? Since, I just wanted to ask how the relationship is doing with the property owner at that particular stop. Haven't heard anything lately. It's been quiet? Been quiet? Good.
I thought that had been, is that where the Mexican restaurant is?
Yes.
I thought that was resolved in the city.
Well.
Or is that not the right word? Quiet.
Yeah, it's quiet.
Many times. None of it's resolved, but it's quiet, so. Quiet's good.
Quiet's good.
Okay, I'll move on to Jennifer. Anybody have any questions, comments with a report for?
And, and I, Jennifer, I apologize. I will, next time that we change the schedule, I will wait until you get everything done and then I will change my work schedule, all right? I apologize.
No problem. I just, good deal. I just wanted to get an idea of what the driver paddle looks like because that's, it's, it's an interesting name for it.
Yeah, so, uh, the drivers have their tablet. It's, um, web-based, I guess, and it just, it's electronic. And for second, for backup, they also have a printed paddle. It's in a different form than what the rider sees as a, as a schedule. It's, it's, um, broken down into just the AM route and it has their lunch hour on there. It's a bigger print. And so, they can just like glance at it, make sure they're at the correct stop at the right time. They use it for reference if they're driving a certain route, but the rider wants to know when their connection is going to be there. Uh, the paddle or the, excuse me, the tablet doesn't tell them about the other route. So, they just open up the paddle and they can say, oh, your connection will be here in two minutes or it'll be here, you know, back in again at ten forty-five. So, it's kind of, they, they use it as a reference or a backup if the tablet, for whatever reason, is not working for them.
And we have it on our desk here too. So, when, when we answer the phone, somebody asks for time, it's just like, there it is, right here. Just a really quick easy one. I don't know why they call the paddles.
That's right. I, I thought like it's an actual, like, that's the first key. Next to the driver, they pull it out, I'm like, wow, I want to, I want to see it.
I thought it was a high school principal, but his paddle was much different than his paddle.
And it is color coded, so summer route is yellow. The, you know, non-summer route, fall, winter is a black. So, when the driver leaves, we know that, oh, you still have the old one or we changed to the new one today, let's make sure you get the yellow. And so, uh, it's kind of a visual too, they have the correct one.
I really, really want to comment, keeping those analog tools. Now that everybody wants to go online and I think we depend so much on technology that if anything was to happen, then we're disconnected. So, I love that they're using all of these visual tools and just helping, uh, helping us stay in touch with what's going on, so. Please, please keep it, yes.
Um, I have a comment too. And those, having those backups, but also the drivers, if one, if the northbound and the southbound, one is running late, the other one says, I'll, I'll check your stops to see if you have passengers in there. If you don't, you know, cut this down so you can make your time up. And it's, it's good that they talk, you know, so it, it works really well.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, I also wanted to share that Deanna and Debbie mentioned about the large printed pledge. Uh, so I brought it to the meeting today. For those that are here that would like to sign the, the pledge and then I'll take it to Seaside. If anybody else wanted to sign it after today. And then we're going to have it framed or laminated and then we're going to post it in the transit center lobby for our riders and public to see the pledge that we're making for them and ourselves. Yeah.
Rebecca?
Yeah, thank you very much, Jennifer. I would be happy to sign that conveniently down in Eric's office. I, and I just wanted to say I'm impressed with how you've hit the ground running with your new position and, and it was a good report. And you, I think you're doing very well, so, um, pull Steve ahead.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. I have a great trainer. Learned invaluable things from Paul, so. And he is on speed dial.
Paul stops by every once in a while.
Yes. He misses us.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else for Jennifer? Okay, we'll move on to Jason. Is he, oh, there's Jason.
Yeah, good morning, board. Hope everybody's doing well. Thank you for all that you're doing. So, I'd just like to highlight a couple of things here. One thing on my report is, um, I'm pleased to say that at least in July right now, we spent all of June just getting, um, our new volunteer driver for the veterans program all built up and trained and ready to go. And now we're just awaiting rides for, uh, for this driver. So, hopefully here soon, we'll, we'll keep him busy and we'll be growing the Veterans Enhanced Transportation Program and helping out our veterans a little more often than we were able to do before. So, that's good. It's a, it's a good step in the right direction. We are still looking for another driver, so as usual, please forward them to me if you bump into anybody who would like to volunteer their time to transport our local veterans, all right? Other than that, I really don't have anything else. If you have any questions, I'd be greatly appreciative.
Questions? Rebecca?
Uh, just a, a comment, basically, Jason, you know, I see, you know, the two-way street, the benefits of the veterans riders program. My husband, Mark, is, you know, as he moves through, you know, getting orientations and, and, you know, getting to know the people, you know, it's, he's, he's also benefiting from it. And I think that is one of the big components of this program is that veterans are so uniquely geared towards helping other veterans. And that's a really big part of his life, you know, and so, uh, it's a good fit. And I'm looking forward to how this develops for, for the program and, and gets more involvement.
Yes, thank you very much for stating that. It is definitely a, a, a program that is helpful in both directions, indeed, yes.
Yeah, well, we've got Jason up here. It was nice when I was down in Arkansas this week. I was talking with a gentleman who's with CTAA on a national level. Their Assistant Director of Mobility Management Program. I can't remember the exact term, but, uh, he spoke very highly of Jason. He knew Jason because he's interacted with Jason and together with, uh, gentleman down from Rogue Valley Transportation District that Jason works with. And so, it was, it was nice to be in Arkansas and know that one of our managers is known down there, you know, at a national level. So, uh, he talked to me about an opportunity that was still available. And so, I let Jason know that he'll be getting ahold of him and there's four spots left. And Jason should apply for this, this program, not, not to go leave us, but,
Yeah, thanks a lot for that, Jeff. Yeah, Bill, he is the National Center for Mobility Management. He's got a great story of how he got to that organization. Um, and ultimately, you know, via New York, you know, he, he did, he worked in transportation in New York of all places and it's found a great home there for the, you know, at National Center for Mobility Management. It's a really good example to folks like myself and the gentleman I work with at Rogue Valley to, to see what it's like to be able to help people at, at not just the local level, but the national level with what we do here locally. So, it's pretty cool.
And I, I want to comment, and my time when I worked going up to Pullman and working with all of those trainers and things at CTAA, the, the programs and education opportunities are great. So, I would encourage you, Jason, to consider that.
Definitely. Thank you.
Anything else of Jason? Thank you, Jason, you're doing a great job.
Thank you, take care.
Okay, and move on to Kathy.
There she is.
How are you?
Any questions for me? I've been, um, super busy the last couple of months as things have been opening back up again, doing some outreach events together with Deanna and Consejo Hispano and getting ready for the ACT International Conference in Chicago, starting next week.
Pamela? I just wanted to comment about the Cannon Beach Transportation System Plan, about the phrase park once. I really think that's a great idea. Think somehow, like to see it incorporated somewhere in our massive, uh, number of pickers. And they certainly need in the Cannon Beach. And you should be able to only park once in Cannon Beach, unofficially said.
Absolutely. And I think that if you look at the rack cards that, have they arrived at SETD yet for the car free travel promotion? If they haven't, they're imminent. That, that phrase is used on the rack card.
Very good. Rebecca?
Um, yeah, hi Kathy. I, um, first of all, I've got a couple items here. And on the second, on your second paragraph of your report, can you explain just a little bit more about the Safe Routes to Schools Plan? The construction grant that they, that, is the city of Seaside not apply for the maximum amount? Or can you explain a little bit more if there's a negative impact on that or, or what?
So, the Safe Routes to School Plan is now an actual plan that the city and the schools district can work off of. And the city uses the Safe Routes to School Plan to apply for grant funds from ODOT through the Safe Routes to School Program. The Safe Routes to School Program has a match requirement, which is why sometimes cities don't apply for the full amount that they could, you know, the, the top limit that is available for, for funding. And Seaside, uh, applied for a good chunk to do a section of one of the proposed sections. And Seaside, uh, applied for a good chunk to do a section of one of the proposed sections of improvements. And I, uh, was not part of the decision-making as to how much money they applied for, because that's a city budgeting thing. And so I can only assume that that was because of budgeting constraints for the match money and the required works that, in the timetable that it needs to be done in.
Okay. So if a person was to, um, attend a Budget Committee meeting in Seaside, could they get some more clarification on the decisions that were made in that regard? Would you think, I mean, would you think that would be one way to find out how it's doing?
I would certainly think that that would be one way. However, the Budget Committee doesn't meet, but right before the budgeting every year. I think that you could probably get more information from attending a Transportation Advisory Committee meeting or submitting an inquiry from the, to the Transportation Advisory Committee.
Okay, thank you. Um, so on the, uh, NCTMN, Transportation Options, you know, that was one of the ones that I flagged to add to the, I didn't see it on our, uh, acronyms sheet. So what, what does that stand for again?
North Coast Tourism Management Network.
Okay. Management Network. And, um, how do we, um, track the, the designs, you know, um, see what they design for that?
The RAC cards?
The, uh, you know, well, I, I guess what I was wondering, oh, because you've already done that. The, the RAC cards are done.
They're done.
And, and who, I guess my question was, the partners, um, who are the partners involved with, with this? Um, where people will get those resources in their agencies?
So we involved as many people as we could from each specific local agents, local city that has a specific RAC card, and then also general agencies. So Jeff was, was one of the people. We've had the Chamber of Commerce, we had the City of Astoria, we had, um, uh, different representatives from different types of agencies involved, whether it's city organizations or hospitality organizations. Depends upon which city we're talking about specifically. So sometimes they don't have, um, as much of a chain, chamber presence, but they have a travel organization or a, you, you know, so we got input from all different places, too.
I figured you did. I just wanted to get confirmation on that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so down below here at, hmm, social media, um, the GetThereOregon, um, is, is there a, you know, any reminders for that, for how we, you know, plug into, um, you know, that, um, I looked it up, and can you explain a little bit more about GetThereOregon?
Sure. GetThereOregon is a-
The website wasn't, you know, super robust. I would just say that.
Okay. Um, GetThereOregon is a website that is sponsored by ODOT, and it is to coordinate and help people ride-share or take, take public transit and measure what the effects are of them using something other than their car by themselves.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, the last thing I have is, um, a suggestion is, and I'd be happy to, uh, be a part of that, you know, to, you know, maybe pilot something. But when I was looking at, um, you know, our, our goals for outreach and connecting with the community, um, and, um, some of the things that we've done on, actually on the buses, um, is that maybe, uh, kids connecting, uh, once again for the safe routes to schools, um, if there was, uh, maybe an art project or something where some of the, you know, finished art or, you know, the art chosen that could be put, uh, on the buses. And then there'd be some press about that, and, you know, get the kids involved. And that, kids, getting the kids involved gets the parents involved, and it just, you know, promotes, um, what we're doing, uh, a little bit more. So put that under your bonnet, and if, you know, some, if, if that, uh, is an idea that has some merit, I'd be happy to do that as a local artist and also one who works with children. I just finished a, uh, week-long, uh, kids' art camp in Cannon Beach that, that is done every year. And I'd be happy to, um, help promote that and, you know, get involved with it. So that's it.
Thank you for the idea. Um, Safe Routes to School is something that I could do with the school districts, is work with them to do art projects, specifically with students around Safe Routes to School and Walk and Bike to School Day and those kinds of things. That wouldn't necessarily have anything to do with the buses. That's not something that I can-
Okay.
That's a whole different decision-maker. You're gonna have to talk to somebody else sitting around the table about that.
Okay.
But within the schools, doing art projects to, that are Safe Routes to School-related is certainly something that I would be interested in doing. It takes the school wanting to have that happen to, to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Evelyn?
Um, do developers, can, if a development occurs around a school district, do they, uh, have to contribute money for sidewalks?
That depends upon each individual city.
So it's not automatic because of Safe Routes to School?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
They don't have that power. The cities have, um, determine what developers have to put in, or required for, of developers.
Okay, thank you. Tracy?
And I just wanted, uh, Rebecca, the third Thursday at six o'clock in city council chambers, there's a lot of empty seats. You're more than welcome to come and talk with us.
For which group, again?
That would be the Transportation Advisory Committee.
Okay. All right, I will do so. Thank you.
You bet.
Anything else for Kathy? Diane?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Here, I'm looking at these things.
Kathy, please remind us on the RAC cards, which counties are involved in this?
So the RAC cards is a regional RAC card for our region here, the Northwest Coast, that goes from Astoria down to Pacific City. And, uh, the specific cities that there are RAC cards for is Astoria, Seaside, Cannon Beach, Manzanita, and Pacific City.
Not for Telenor?
I think they're wrapped into Pacific City.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Mary?
Good morning.
Anything else for your report, or any questions?
Any comments, any questions, any?
Are the latest, uh, schedules out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I saw them.
They were out a week in advance on all the shelters and on our, yep, they were posted.
Yeah.
Facebook, they're posted on the website, and distributed copies of them to the chambers, and, yep, they're out.
This is personal. It's not a-
Yeah, no, no.
Get those things out.
No, they've been out, and they've been well affected, and, and they're a different color on the top so that there can't be any confusion. So we put them up before we took them down. Do you know what I'm saying? So, and they were up for a week, and they went back, and I took them, the other old schedules down.
Do they have dates on them?
Yes.
Well, that's, no, this is, uh, uh, I tried to determine whether what I had was when and when. These are old, old ones.
Yeah, this is the new, the yellow. The, and our old ones were were green, but there's a date-
Okay.
That they'll be, and these will be changed again in the fall, so prepare in October.
Oh, they will.
We do it twice a year.
So the, the schedules in October will change?
Yep.
This is just the summer schedule.
Mm-hmm. Because it's like, you know, the heavy traffic, so, but-
Okay.
We, we deal with in South County.
Including the Lower Columbia Connector?
No, they don't all change. No, that one did not change, but, but-
You can change it if you'd like.
No, thank you.
But we make sure that the, that the labels match so that there's no confusion. Even though the route may not have changed, we still change that color so that when you're in the shelter, you know, or when you look online, you know you got the right season, if you would.
Mm-hmm.
So, and the paddles are yellow as well, so they match this. Yeah.
Mary? Sorry.
We have to go with Rebecca first. She had her hand on-
That's fine.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
Rebecca?
Okay, fine. Um, I just had a question for you about, um, the OSHA wildfire smoke training. And I'd like to know, uh, just, uh, just curious is, do you feel that a lot of agencies are, um, stepping up to the plate and getting this, uh, training? I mean, is it, is it required of, of a lot of agencies? And, and then maybe just a little bit about, if you could inform us a little bit about, uh, you know, where are we in, in terms of, uh, responding, you know, a quick response to, uh, that kind of, um-
Rebecca, that would be more of a question for Sue, because she's the one that coordinates training.
All right.
Mary indicated that she took the training, so.
Okay, all right, very good. I will just, Sue, if you wanna tell me when your turn comes, I'm, that would be fine.
Mary has a comment for you, though. After taking this, I, what's really amazing is after taking this training, which I've never taken before and was very glad to have taken, um, it's, it was specific, especially for the heat illness, and, and it was very educational, very. But I'm driving in a hundred-degree, hundred-and-five-degree temperatures up at Portland and looking at these poor workers that are working out in that heat. And it really hit home because they're drinking water, they're looking for shade. But you could see the people that were not in OSHA compliance very quickly. You would notice that. There was no shade provided. They weren't drinking water. So it, it was very educational. I'm glad we, that it was required for us to take it. It's very, very good. So, do you want Sue to talk now?
Um, listen, anything else for Mary?
Uh, yeah.
Tracy?
Um, so I just, and this is just a general comment, um, uh, who's in, who takes care of, of litter pickup and things at, at our bus shelters?
Well, we, we have, uh, uh, we do have some people are hired, but I think also our, does our mechanic or not mechanic system-
Lot of tenant.
Lot of tenants, sorry.
Lot of tenants, people. Okay. Um, they're doing a, a good job at, in that. And I try to help by throwing things in there. I just wanted to let, make that, make sure that, um-
In Seaside, we have, um, Coast Rehab provides that service down in the Seaside area, and then in this, no-
And, and I, and I think there's a, a couple of areas we could beat the Blackbirds back. Maybe we could do some volunteer work. Is that possible? Around the, the Cinema Shelter and/or a couple other. McDonald's is pretty well maintained, but.
Yeah, the, the Cinema, it needs a, needs work. And there's a couple other ones that need, like, drainage as well, that-
Okay. Well, I, I would give some volunteer opportunities to, I'd be willing to get out there with the record. So, anyway, uh, anyway, I appreciate, um, the schedules are nicely maintained. Mary does a really good job at that. I compliment you for that. I'm done.
Well, often we'll up one day and down the next, so you just, you drive by, you see it's, it's, they're gone. It's, it's crazy that they're gone.
Evelyn?
Uh, speaking of lots, I just wanted a reminder that the full planting is coming upon us. And we talked about the last meeting to, um, tidy up and do some planting on the empty spaces.
You know, I had a conversation with staff after that last meeting, and we're not gonna put bark down. We're not really gonna do much, because we have a high transient population. A lot of those people smoke, and our landscaping gets caught on fire. The bark gets caught on fire, especially during hot days. It'll just naturally combust and start little fires.
Well, we can use compost for planting, which is compost, it's not flammable. And I thought, what I had suggested, I thought, was that to put some, like a bush or something, some planting there that is just not bare, uncatched.
Yeah, they used to have bushes, but again, the population we have around here that can destroy things. And we can't have somebody out there 24/7 every day.
Or you could do a gosa roses.
Yeah. We'll still give, we'll give it to our landscapers and see what they can suggest for us.
Okay, let's move on to Sue.
Good morning.
Morning, Sue. How are you?
Any questions? Okay. Did you want clarification on this Oregon OSHA? Or did Mary help you understand that?
Rebecca, did you have that question?
Yes, I did. And Sue, you're kind of breaking up, so I didn't hear what you just said. But if you were asking for that question, I, I would like to know, you know, if we, if there is, um, if you just happen to know that people do, uh, take this, uh, training, uh, across the board, you know, in a lot of public agencies, um, I'd like to know, uh, because I think it's really, uh, becoming much more of an issue. So far, we have been blessed by not having wildfires in our direct area, but it is a big concern to me. I, I personally, in the last few years, have been badgering Wilcox and Flagel down in the Seaside fueling station to mow their grasses. They, it gets, they have a yard that has a big open area that just gets filled with weeds all the time, you know, and they wait way too long to do it. And now the manager says, you know, oh, it's you again, you know? So I, at least they're starting to, and when I call them every year to mow a little earlier and earlier, but I actually brought it to the attention of our CSO officer in Seaside, and he, I think, will get a little bit more reaction from Wilcox and Flagel, because it's like, almost like the poster trial of what's wrong with this picture? You know, a fueling station and giant, non-defensible space with lots of weeds, you know? So I really care an awful lot about, you know, getting people trained and informed about wildfire, you know, response. So, um, I'm glad to hear that it was effective, but I'm kind of curious to know that, you know, are other people, agencies getting on board with that?
Hmm, I'm not sure about other agencies, but I know, I keep track of, um, everybody. I make sure everybody has, um, the manual that I prepared, um, and also, um, that they take both of those trainings. They send me a certi- certificate, and I keep it together. I mean, I don't expect that, uh, a little organization, you know, like, um, our district will get audited, but you never know. So I just want to make sure I've got that in a file should we get audited. But it's an Oregon OSHA requirement, so I think it's for all employers, but I could check that out for you.
It is. It is all employers.
And so how, directly, I guess maybe my follow-up question is, could you just give us a couple of examples of how this, uh, training and, you know, and how we were, are required of all of our people? Uh, you know, what are some good examples of, a couple examples of that?
Well, when the heat index, and so, um, all the supervisors and whoever would like, um, has in heat index app on their phone, so when it goes over eighty degrees, um, we're required to provide, um, ice water, you know, and then, but our, most of our vehicles are, um, have air conditioning, so we're covered there. The transit center has air conditioning. So anyway, and then when it goes over ninety, that's when you have to start implementing their rest breaks. And, um, I don't know, I'd have to look, but not off the top of my head, but, um, you know, they have to take a rest break every fifteen minutes or whatever after ninety degrees if they are working out in the open, not in a, in a, um, air-conditioned vehicle. And then for the smoke, I can't remember the exact, um, zero-point-one-something, um, um, particle, um, size of particle. So what we did there is I've got, um, KN95 masks. If the, um, if the particle, smoke particles get to that point, then we have masks for all of our employees at the Transit Center here and at, uh, Seaside and Astoria here.
Is there anything about, is there anything about, like, how things we can do to, um, that's on the health side? On the safety side, you know, is there any impact that, uh, you know, like, can- On the safety side, you know, is there any impact that, uh, you know, like can, can buses, you know, contribute to, uh, you know, fires? Um, can the bus drivers, um, do anything about, um, you know, alerting when there's a, our wildfire potential? Or, or did the training not go that far?
No, it did not go that far. It's just how to protect your employees. Um, when the smoke, um, levels get to a certain particle or the heat, uh, heat illness, when, um, the heat rises to a certain extent. And then everybody was trained, um, on, um, signs of heat illness. Um, and then ways of prevention. Yeah. And they're trained every year anyway on safe personnel before this Oregon OSHA, um, thing came out. But the safe personnel doesn't offer, um, like ice water or any of those types of things that the, um, employers need to provide. But they do, um, give a comprehensive overview of, of heat illness and the signs to watch for when, when it's hot outside.
I guess then if the, um, if we do have a wildfire problem here, then it could affect routes and our service from the, from that perspective. And we have a, we have a plan for all, you know, I guess that would just be a basic emergency plan like you would if there was a, a traffic accident or something?
Yes, we, we would respond appropriately. You know, we learned a lot a few years ago when the, the wildfires down in Southern Oregon. Um, you know, as far as coordinating with other agencies to help with evacuations, for example. Um, we were, we were going to, you know, if needed, um, get dispatched some of our buses down to Lakin County. Um, but unfortunately, there was no way to get there, um, because of the fires. And they were able to do their evacuations with the, with the fleet that, um, that they had. But, uh, as transit agency managers, we talk about this specifically. Um, about how we will be willing and ready to respond if, if necessary. We, we're also on call for Clackamas, um, but we ended up not having to go over there either, so.
You know, in terms of a, a potential for evacuation, would we be in, in, uh, line to be of assistance? And do we have a plan that could be implemented in case we needed to?
Yeah, we'd be a part of the EOC when it's activated. The Emergency Operations Center.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Sue? Emily?
All right. Regarding the, uh, monthly, uh, COVID report, is it possible for the board to receive that?
I guess I would leave that determination up to Jeff.
If the board would like it, we can send it out.
And I, I guess that, well, some of the cases are increasing and also in terms of, uh, the monkey disease. Should be, I'm sure you're aware of it, of course, but, um, that the whole state actually should be, um, keep track of that. So we're not caught flat-footed as we were with COVID-19 because there has been discussions of putting, um, the monkey disease on a national level as a, um-
Yeah, we haven't received any guidance whatsoever on, on monkey pox, but, uh, um, we can, if the board would like the report, we can send that out to you.
What was the board's pleasure?
Sounds good.
Okay.
I just want to say that, um, when we show cases of COVID, there's a big log check going by. Um, when we show, you know, if we have a case of COVID, I have to say that none have been, um, uh, have gotten sick from being on the bus. It's all, all lately, I mean, the last, except for in March of 2020, all of the COVID cases have been from family members or, or meeting in big groups or something like that. But anyway, just so that when you look at the report, I don't want you to, to think that it's just, um, employees getting sick because they're on the bus.
Well, the problem is that you'll never know if a passenger has become ill.
But I, my, my experience has been that the employee will come and they will tell me, I was here or there. Or I got a call from my friend and we've just been at a dinner at their house and they came down with COVID. Now I have COVID. I guess, and that's, that's kind of what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else for Sue? Thank you, Sue.
Well, I do want to say that, um, let's see, Jennifer and I and Matt and I have been interviewing. And, um, we have a new, um, bus driver coming on, on Friday. Um, he has to be trained, but then we've interviewed, um, one other one with his CDLB. So, um, we're looking forward to, another one's coming on August tenth, um, with his CDLA. So things are moving. So, you know, keep us in your thoughts that, you know, um, we will get more applications. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Okay. Okay. That's all of our reports. Anything else before we adjourn? No?
Move to adjourn and reconvene at eleven thirty.
Okay. We are adjourned and we will reconvene at eleven thirty, as Tracy said.
Do we need to disconnect on Zoom?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop this meeting. We'll start a new one.
Same login.
All right.
Same Zoom ID.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
I'm gonna walk back. Get that down. Because it goes on and on.
Yes. Yes.
So I'll just-